Number Zero, Member Schilling, Member Luger, and Mayor Iverson are present. I will read our usual opening statement. Good evening. We greatly appreciate our staff and residents adapting to our teleconference format due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight's meeting will be held under Minnesota State Statute 13D dot zero two one that permits a public body to hold a meeting via telephone or other electronic means due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For members of the public, the meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Wyoming YouTube page. The Wyoming City Council meeting will be recorded as part of the public record. After each agenda item is read and staff gives a report on the agenda item, I will call upon each council member individually if they have questions on that particular item. If you wish to make a motion or second emotion, please state your name first. All votes on all will be completed by a roll call to meet the standard for State Statute thirteen D dot zero two one. Thank you. And with that, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I have the flag in my background. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Linwood, do we have anything for open forum tonight?
Mayor Iverson, we do not.
Perfect. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the Wyoming-Minnesota City Council for January, or I'm sorry, July seven, twenty twenty. If there are no questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
Member Luger will make that motion.
All right, Member Luger makes the first. Do we have a second?
Member Schilling, second.
We have a second by Member Schilling. I'll go around the room. Member Jaeger.
Aye.
Number Zero.
Aye.
Member Schilling.
Aye.
Member Luger.
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is aye. It is approved. Consent Agenda two and three, does anybody wish to pull the item, any one of the two items from the agenda for further discussion? If there is not, we need a motion to approve item number two and three on the consent agenda.
Some of members there was.
Number Zero makes the first. Do we have a second? We have a second by Member Luger. Round the room, please. Member Jaeger.
Aye.
Number Zero.
Aye.
Member Schilling.
Aye.
Member Luger.
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is aye. Those do pass. Um, number, we're going to the reports four, five, six, seven, and eight on the agenda. Does anybody wish to pull a communication for further discussion? I don't see anybody wishing to pull anything. We'll move on to communications. Number nine, Wyoming Stagecoach Days Firework Display Update. I believe Ms. Dumas will be updating us.
Thank you. Mayor, Members of Council, we just wanted to provide an update to you on the fireworks display that is scheduled for September nineteenth as our Stagecoach Days event this year. So we have contracted with our usual vendor to do our fireworks display. So you can expect a very similar show to previous years. One of the things we're really centering at this is making sure that we are able to provide this safely and have that really be central to our efforts. So a part of our planning for this event includes proposed kind of a grid circle on our fields that you can see exhibited in one of the pictures in your packet. So the idea of this is to provide indicators to residents when they are coming to the display. You can see they're on the top of what a six-foot boundary would be. So this is really gonna help make sure that we can separate people and provide that six feet of distancing, even though we will be outside, that there is risk for being gathered in groups. We want to make sure that this event is fun and supports community and doesn't result in an unfortunate spread of COVID. So that's, that's one of the main precautions that we're looking at. Some other ideas that we're looking at are expanding the locations for where we have viewers of the fireworks display. So you can see, well, Goodview Park is kind of the standard place where we've been viewing this. Blue Spurs Park and Burgess Memorial Park are within half a mile of Goodview Park and would also be excellent viewing places for the fireworks. So we would also set up similar displays at those locations. And depending on the feedback that we get from residents and the turnout that we're expecting, we also might consider reaching out to the school district to see if they would allow us to implement a similar structure at the ballfields behind Wyoming Elementary. Currently, as it stands, the governor's order still limits outdoor gatherings to no more than twenty-five people. And so we want to respect that and make sure that we're, again, making sure that we're being safe and promoting public safety as a part of the community effort. And that's all I have open for questions.
Right, Ms. Dumas, I have a question.
Yeah.
Have we researched anything? It seems like we'd be able to see the fireworks in multiple locations better if it was up higher. If there was some way, I don't know if a stage is a better word for it, or on top of the water tower, but something higher. So have we looked into that? Have we talked to the vendor to see what their recommendations are, seeing that they put on these events all the time?
Yeah, we have reached out to the vendor specifically looking at how can we really make sure that the most people can see the display while also following those COVID guidelines? So the fireworks are set off from a trailer that allows them to be automated. And that really is a part of the safety efforts, and that really limits the placement of where they can set that off from. It's hard to really lift that up higher. And in reach, in our discussions with the vendors, they did not express any concern about being able to view the fireworks while also having distance viewership.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions from council?
Um, yeah, Member Nan Kariega has one, or two. To follow on the mayor's question, it's, I don't believe the mayor was asking to lift the, or maybe she was, to lift the shells, the firing plat, launching platform higher. But as I have watched the fireworks from years from my remote location, some shells burst higher than others. There are a number of shells that tend to burst, let's say maybe twenty feet in the air, and other shells that burst forty feet in the air. Can we talk to the vendor to see if we could get shells that burst forty feet in the air? Or, you know, at a higher altitude than some of the other ones?
Uh, we absolutely can reach out to see if we can restructure the design of the plan to allow for maximum height of the fireworks. The impact of that could be less fireworks, as those tend to be more expensive shells or less varied of a display. I think one of the things that they really try to strive for in the display is to have a variety of visuals. If you wanted to move towards more of the same type of shell, that that would decrease that. But if the council wants us to pursue that, we absolutely can.
I think it would depend on whether we go to remote locations. If we're still staying at Goodview only, I don't think it's a problem. But if you start adding Bruce, Bruce, Burgess, and the school, that might be something to consider. When would we know if we're going to do those remote locations?
Yeah, so looking at how we want to move forward, and this also is something we want to get some council feedback. If we want to, kind of depending on how stringent we really want to be in enforcing the twenty-five people per gathering space, would kind of determine how we would move forward with distributing throughout the city. Looking at Goodview Park, I think we could have kind of each field be its own kind of grouping for that twenty-five. We could take reservations as a city and have people sign up for slots or specifically each kind of pod that we set up. We could do that. Or if the council is, the preference is to in, simply invite people to social distance and minimize large grouping, that also could be the direction. And depending on your comfortability about how you feel about public gatherings, that would, if you want us to just have it at Goodview versus separating out into the other facilities as well.
And then the other question I had, I mean, we're talking, we can make circles in the parks, but what are we going to do on the street? Will people be confined to their cars if they park on the street? Will they have to be, you know, will be, will we be enforcing social distancing on the street?
Uh, so we are not proposing having enforcement necessarily of the social distancing, but setting it up so that people do that as naturally as possible. In terms of parking on the street, I think the expectation is standard parking. If people want to get out of their cars, that's up to them. And a part of this also is that there is an element of risk with any type of gathering right now. And so the city wants to, will make clear in any publications that we do and marketing materials for this, that there is an element of risk and that people do come at their own risk to these types of gatherings.
Right, and I, and I think Ms. Dumas did a good job summarizing that. I think, I think the biggest thing is we're really, really gonna try to advert, excuse me, advertise this and really push out that information that, you know, asking our community to really, to make this successful, to really try to, you know, keep in mind some of those different things as far as maintaining those social distance, utilizing those squares. And we're gonna try to really get information on this early and often to really try to help people get familiar with what, what the anticipated and expected protocols will be. So this will be a fun, successful event.
I am, just a thought is, we do such a great job with our surveys. It would be interesting to see how many neighborhoods over by Swenson Park and on over can see the fireworks from Goodview. Because that would give us an idea of, you know, maybe we have to quadrant the city in certain ways where this neighborhood might need to go here, you know, just maybe assign if they're gonna come. You know, assign different places for them. That's just a thought. But I'm ex, overall, I'm just excited to have something that is normal in our city because we have not had anything that's normal. So I think our residents overall are gonna be excited to know that we're still able to do this and put this on for them. And I have a lot of faith in them as well that they're gonna social distance. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna practice that. And as always, we always hear every year, we have the best fireworks out of any community when we, when we have them in September, so. But we still have a little more time to push that out, right, Mr. Linwood, to kind of think a little bit more, Chief Hoppy?
We, we do, and I think it'll be an effort on between staff and council. Obviously, you're in contact with the community to kind of spread and share that message of how we want to do this. And we will have public safety there during the event as we normally do to, to help out with any, anything. But I, I think it'll, I think we can do this where it'll be a successful event for the city.
All right, and then, um, Member Schilling and Member Luger, you're kind of a little bit further out from Goodview Park. Well, I shouldn't say Member Schilling, he's kind of, that's his backyard.
I was gonna say, I see him well, very well. We watch him on our deck every year.
And a lot of your neighbors, are they kind of the same thing, right? They're just watching.
Absolutely. Everybody watches in the backyard.
Okay, and Member Luger, how do you see them out in your house?
Um, and I'm not too far from central or from, from Swenson Park. We see them okay. There's a lot of trees. And so you really have to find kind of the sweet spot on your street. Not everybody's deck works. But certainly there are places, there, I mean, were we to plan it, there would be places that I think people could park and see, or like designated places kind of in this area that might have more visibility than others.
Okay, that's good to know. Awesome. We go to a, a park, a different park, so, to, to view them, so, that's great. All right, if there are no further questions or comments, we don't need a motion on this, then we could go to number ten. So I'm just kind of looking, is there any other questions real quick?
Can I just get clarification if there's a specific direction, if the council wants to keep the focus on Goodview Park or to explore options for distancing at some nearby parks as well?
Okay, I'll go around the room then with everybody. So, um, Member Luger?
I think if we keep them at Goodview, I think one way that we could make it, you know, a more comprehensive community activity is to identify other places and set that up so that people could watch in different parks or different areas of the city.
Okay, Member Schilling?
Um, I, I think it's good to keep it at Goodview. I think you got basically two parks there, a parking lot plus streets. Everything is straight and level. The topography in my mind is obviously best, in my opinion, for Goodview Park. And I do know that Clarice Chickens will definitely see it because they're always up high, so.
That's great. All right, um, Member Zero.
Keep it at Goodview, that's a good spot.
Awesome. Can you see them from your house, Members Zero?
No, I, no, I generally drive over with the perk.
Okay, all right. Um, and I'm good with keeping it at Goodview and, and to kind of keep working the plan. So I think it's, it's coming along quite nicely. All right, you're welcome. We're gonna move on to number ten, which is the twenty-twenty City of Wyoming Election Preparedness Plan. Ms. Dumas, I believe you're presenting on this one as well?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor, Members of Council. We, with the election season quickly approaching, we wanted just to provide an update to you all about how we are making sure that our polling places are safe places for residents to come and participate in the democratic process. So I've included the, the entire preparedness plan in your packet, so I won't go over that in depth. But really, the critical people that we're implementing this year are the expansion of the number of polling places, or non-polling places, election booths that we have. Our old election booths were all connected together, if you recall. And so we've invested in some new polling, locate, or polling, election booths that allow us to spread those out a little bit and provide for social distancing in the polling place while people are voting. And that practice is extending to kind of the entire setup of the polling place. And we're also making sure that election judges and residents have access to masks and hand sanitizer to make sure that they're, we're pretty germ-free of an environment as we possibly can.
All right. All right, um, so do we have questions? I'll go around the room and you guys can state your questions if you have them. Um, let's see, Member Jaeger?
Uh, no questions.
All right, Members Zero.
No questions.
Member Schilling?
I just had one question. Kelly, um, is the state providing the hand sanitizers and all the masks? I know they're doing it in West St. Paul for our election judges and polling sites because I canceled my order that I had sent in for the election. So I was curious if that we are following that same.
The county is providing a lot of masks and sanitizer disinfectant for the city. We have some additional backup PPE that we have in case we run out, especially with the primary as a smaller turnout traditionally than the general election. We're assessing that for really what is the demand gonna be, since we haven't had a COVID election yet. So we are, we have supplies from the county, but we're prepared in case that's not sufficient for the demand that we see.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, Members Zero.
I have no, no questions.
Oh, I might have already asked that. I think I lost where I was at. Member Luger?
No questions.
All right, um, did I get everybody before I say I have no questions? Everybody? Yes? Okay, need to pay attention. All right, um, so Ms. Dumas, is that, do you need anything from us regarding? We're good with that. Awesome. I know it's gonna be a, it's just gonna be different all the way around. So good job on, on being prepared. All right, new business, um, we are on the agenda, number eleven, which is actually page fifty-nine of our packets. Number eleven is to consider a proclamation for the stump-out suicide event that will take place virtually on August fifteenth, twenty twenty. And I believe Ms. Dumas, you're doing this one as well?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, Members of Council, the city wanted to recognize the contribution of the stump-out suicide event that is happening on September fifteenth this year. And really, the contributions that that type of event all makes to promoting safety and mental health in our community, as well as recognizing some of the adaptability that that event has gone through this year to adapting to more of a virtual format. So this proclamation really recognizes the purpose of that event and the leadership that that event has had in the Wyoming community.
That's great. We'll go around the room for questions. Member Luger?
I have no questions. I think it's great.
Member Schilling?
I have no questions. I also think it's a wonderful thing, so.
Members Zero?
I have no questions.
All right, Member Jaeger?
Oh, I have one question. How do you do a five K virtually?
I'm gonna refer to Mr. Linwood on that because he's had some friends that have done some virtual events. So I'll let him take the, the question.
I, I did, I did participate in one virtual five K. And essentially, it's encouraging with the, the stump-out suicide, obviously has a very large amount of people that go to that. But essentially, the idea is that you're doing it virtually together, and there's opportunities for people to take videos of their groups and pictures of their groups. And you can share those with whatever organization may be running it, in this case, stump-out suicide. So they ask that you, you know, together with potentially members of your households or, or groups, you know, and do that virtual run. So that's, the idea is to still, you still go through the same process of receiving your T-shirts when you sign up for this, and then they have the ability to still kind of celebrate, you know, whatever organization or whatever event that they're trying to do within a community. So, and I, as far as I know, stump-out suicide will be handled the exact same way.
Okay, so basically you just, you're online and you just share a picture?
You can, right, you can share video, you can share a picture, but the idea is to go and do the, the five K to make your own, your own route or whatever it may be to, to fulfill that. And then you, right, you can share pictures, videos, et cetera, and then they'll usually post that, whether they have a website or social media, or that's, that's my experience, how it's been. I believe stump-out suicide is the same.
Yeah, they're also allowing bike riding. You can bike ride, you can walk, you can run, you can skateboard. Anything that's a five K, they're allowing to do, which I think is kind of fun because people that can't run or walk, they're able to do something else, I think is amazing. They're also doing virtual visits. So they're gonna have some surprise door knocks to people. And then they are also, my understanding is knocking on some participants' door and giving away just some free fun gift certificates and swag. So I think it's gonna be a great event for them. I know they're kind of worried about participation, but I've seen a lot that have worked really well. And I just have to say that, again, this is something, as we all know, that's very near and dear to my heart and to my family. And now with COVID and mental health, it, it's a little bit bigger of an issue with mental health. So I think there'll probably be more money raised. And always appreciative of our city really putting their arms around this and our community. So my personal note is, thank, thank you. And thanks to Canvas Health for continuing to have this event in our community, so. Did I forget anybody with questions?
Um, I don't actually have any questions, but I do know that there will, I think there also, there will be a, like a celebration ceremony on the, the morning of the fifteenth. And so all the, the pictures and whatnot that get submitted of participants should be submitted, I think, before that. But then there will be like a virtual gathering on that day. So I registered last week, so I'm super excited.
I got mine in too. I'm pretty excited about it as well. So I think we, I think it should be a challenge that all council members register, including our employees. There's a little challenge. I'm seeing Paul saying, yep, he's gonna be there. Dennis, you're on it. I see it. Tom and Mark, look at you guys. You are picking up your phone and getting that registration in. So Kelly, you gotta see it.
I'm sure.
So, all right, um, I don't think you need any motion. Oh, yeah, we need to approve it. So we need a motion to approve the proclamation for the stump-out suicide event that will take place virtually on August fifteenth, twenty twenty, and I will personally make that first motion. So do we have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second by Member Luger. Around the room, please. Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Number Zero?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Luger?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. All right, uh, number twelve on our agenda, to consider approving policy twenty-five, a policy for federal grant procedures, and Mr. Linwood is taking this one.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the council, tonight you'll see in front of you a, a policy regarding federal grant procedures. On June tenth of twenty twenty of this year, the City of Wyoming was notified that we'd be receiving a contingent hundred and sixty-five thousand Minnesota State DNR grants towards our Swenson Park project. And then, as you're aware, that more recently in July, we received six hundred and five thousand federal government CARES Act funds that was distributed to cities within Minnesota for six hundred and five thousand. The, the Swenson Park grant, even though it is through the Minnesota State DNR, it is part of a larger federal grant. And when you receive over seven hundred and fifty thousand in funds in one calendar year, that can be a click to have a single audit that is needed to be completed when you receive that much in federal funding. We're anticipating right now, we have received that CARES Act money, or the six hundred and five thousand. Like I said, the Swenson Park dollars are contingent on approval. That happens in September of, September twenty-first, I believe, of this year. And then we anticipate we'll receive those funds in twenty twenty. We may not, but we're anticipating that right now. Hence why it's in best practice that we have guidelines for that federal funds in case that we do actually, in fact, receive that audit and as we go through the administration process for the CARES Act. So what you'll see in front of you tonight is a policy that we worked to compile with our financial, finance director from AAM, that they've been helping give some guidance to their city. So it just goes through guidance regarding internal controls, travel, financial management, accounting records, personal compensation, documentation, conflict of interest procurement, report certification, financing reporting, performance reporting, allowable costs and documentation. Every federal grant has some different guidelines, which may, you may or may not have to abide by. But essentially, this policy puts in place potentially anything that we may have to be required in a grant. These two might not have all of these, but essentially this will allow us to be able to answer all those. So with that, I can certainly stand for any questions that the council may have.
All right, um, we will go around the room. We will start with Members Zero.
Uh, talking about the six hundred and five or six hundred and fifty thousand, what, what does that money earmark for?
Right, so right now, the, the six hundred and five thousand, we're able to use that for the city's expenses in regards to COVID or anything that we've had to do in regards to that for as far as PPE or necessary steps that we've had to take and as far as setting up our, our, our facilities or potentially remotely is, in, in looking at those or other technology improvements that we've done. The other component is something that we're gonna be speaking at our next budget work session, and that's the idea of being able to utilize those funds to help businesses in town. And we're continuing, Ms. Dumas and I are continuing to evaluate that. And we actually have another meeting tomorrow with city administrators in Shisago County, along with the county to discuss that potential grant application with businesses. But we'd like to talk about that at that work session and talking about showing, showing the council as we compile the potential city costs and then have a conversation with the council about what they would like to see, how much of that money potentially go towards business grants and present the council with a draft of that application and how we'd utilize that.
I guess that answered my question. I was kind of concerned, hoping that some of that could have been used and will be used for some of our local businesses. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, Member Luger?
I have no questions.
Member Jaeger?
No questions. This is extremely, extremely detailed and hopefully meets all of the federal government's requirements.
It is extremely detailed. I agree. And we did work with our, through the state and the league and then our, our finance director to try to make sure that we do hit all those necessary governmental, or excuse me, Make sure that we do hit all those necessary governmental, or excuse me, federal government components, and I believe that we have accomplished that.
Good.
All right, and members Schilling?
I have no questions.
And I have no questions either. It is very detailed. You guys, um, the whole staff has been really working hard, um. With the, the whole CARES Act and everything that we have going on. So great job on that. Uh, so we are gonna need a motion to approve policy 20 dash 5, a policy for federal grant procedures. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that mention.
So moved by members there was.
Okay, so we have a first by members there was. Do we have a second by member Luger?
Yes.
All right, uh, round the room, please. Um, member Schilling?
Hi.
Member Jaeger?
Hi.
Members there was?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is I. Number 13 on our agenda, which is page 71 in our packet. To consider moving the Wednesday, July 29th, 2020 Wyoming City Budget, City Council Budget Work Session. To Wednesday, August 5th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Mr. Linwood?
Yes, Mayor, Members of Council, um, we'd like to ask the council tonight that if they would be, um, willing to consider, um, changing our. July 29th budget work session and moving that to August 5th at 6:00 PM. Reasons being as we are, um, completing our first draft of the 2021 budget and as part of that process. Um, we talked about some of our early, uh, budget sessions that we've been working with AAM to. Um, complete that long-term plan and they would like to give the council, uh, the first look at that, that long-term plan. Is that there'll be a guiding document that we would like to use and, uh, next year's budget and our future budget. Um, the other component of that would be to updating our street CIP, um, to give the council the first look at that. In regards to, um, those indicated streets that the council approved. And then also, as I just had, uh, discussed per, uh, council member's there was question, to talk about that CARES money, uh, and, and the, the use of the city. And then, um, how we'd like to potentially utilize that, um, to our businesses, what, businesses within the community through, through that grant process. So I'll stand for any questions.
All right, um, let's see, around the room, n- member Schilling?
Sorry, sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't. I have no questions at this time, air.
Okay, and does the date work for you?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, I'm quite in favor of it. I'm on vacation again next week and I would really have to, uh, tell my wife I have to attend a meeting, so.
All right, we're glad you're going on yet another vacation. We're very happy for you.
A month of July for me every year. I've only worked six days out of July for the last six years, so.
That's a, but good for you. I think that's great. All right, um, member Luger?
The, nope, that works for me.
All right, and members there was?
That works for me.
Perfect. And member Jaeger?
Works for me.
All right, and it works for me. So I'm gonna go ahead and read it. We'll need a motion to approve Wednesday, July. No, we need to approve Wednesday, August 5th, 2020 at 6:00 PM for the Wyoming City Council Budget, uh, Work Session. Um, replacing the Wednesday, July 29th, 2020 meeting. Uh, motion to approve.
So moved, member Schilling.
We have a motion to approve by member Schilling. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
All right, member Luger's got the second on this. All right, so around the room, please. Members there was?
Hi.
Member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Schilling?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I. So we do have that date switched. All right, uh, we will go to, um, council reports. And then I'm sure I'm gonna ask Mr. Erickson a question, and I'm sure I'm going to ask Mr. Chief Hoppy a question. And Tom, I think we're gonna, we're gonna stay with you, just kind of nothing from the attorney, right? So, all right, so let's, um, start with, uh, member Jaeger.
Uh, no report. Thank you all for watching out there.
All right, members there was?
Uh, yeah, I attended the sewer commission meeting yesterday over at Lynchham City Hall. Uh, Mark Nelson reported there had been problems with high levels of ammonia, but, uh, stated that the treatment has improved and ammonia levels have dropped off in, in the affluent. And, and all below permit levels, which is great. Also, uh, another note of business, the board approved the request for payment number one to Pember Companies in the amount of, uh, 39,982. Dollar and eighty-seven cents for work completed on the corridor lift station improvements up to date. And then there was some discussion on hiring a replacement for Mark Nelson, plant superintendent, who will be retiring at the end of September. And it was decided that, uh, there wasn't enough interest from different individuals to take his spot. So on a vote of six to three, the board, uh, decided to interview representatives from, from private companies, one being Violia and the other one USW. And those interviews should be within the next week, and it appears like, uh, a private company will be running the plant in the near future. The board also accepted the resignation of Debbie Steele. She's a secretary out at the plant. She's going to retire and her last day will be September the 30th, 2020, and that's my report.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, member Schilling?
I'd like to thank everybody for watching. Um, I do not have a report. I have been on vacation the last two weeks, so. It's good to be back.
Sounds good, thank you. Member Luger?
I have no report. Thanks everyone for watching.
All right, and, um, I had only one meeting, I think this week, I think it was only one. Uh, I did attend the Personnel Committee Meeting for the Sewer Commission. Um, where we did look at the potential of three companies, um, managing our plant. Uh, it was a very interesting conversation. I think there's a couple of good candidates. Um, the one thing that came out of this, and, and I think we all agreed on it. Um, was that hopefully whoever is chosen, if there is an outside company chosen, um, that they will. Ask, uh, current employees, um, or have them go through the hiring process to become employees. So, um, I, I think that's important. So I think we all agreed on that, but very interesting. And I was, um, very appreciative that I could step in on that. Um, otherwise, uh, today is Ally's last day, so, um, she did send council a card. And you guys all have a copy of that and she did a great job in the city and what was that, Mr. Linwood? You've got it?
I have not, I have not sent that yet out to the council. I need to, I need to scan it in, but I will be, excuse me, sending that to all of you for your review.
All right, it's, it's a nice card. So, um, she will be missed. We wish her the best. She's done a great job within the city. So, um, sad to see her go, but she's on to great things. And, uh, now let's see, I am going to ask Mr. Erickson, uh, just a quick report, if you can, over on, um, a road project. And then anything on the bridge, um, over on biking, if we've got any update on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Uh, the project is progressing pretty well. Uh, it would be nice if we got a little less rain. The contractor did not work yesterday or today with the exception of, uh, clearing some of the water on the roadways. And so, uh, they will have two crews, uh, starting tomorrow, uh, on the project. And so we'll see a little bit more progress than we have thus far, but they are, uh, working on Storm Sewer. They'll be starting on street work this week as well, um, on the southern area one. Uh, they are moving into area two and three with reclamation, uh, yet this week and, um, and, and are progressing pretty nicely. So things are going pretty well. Um, East Viking Bridge is, for the most part, uh, completely designed and we're waiting for funding. Now, as we, uh, we hope to get some bridge bonding, uh, money for that is, uh, as we've discussed in the past, where we'll have. Um, a good portion of the, the actual, the cost of the bridge itself would be covered, uh, by the state. So that would be fantastic for the city, uh, so to save significant money, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that's, uh, certainly a positive that we're looking forward to getting that bonding at some point. It is on a regular inspection schedule and it does meet the requirements for replacement. However, it is, uh, still, still functional and we're just trying to be proactive and, and plan accordingly. So that's going well with Comfort, uh, the Preserve at Comfort Lake, uh, that project is grading, uh, is occurring. Storm Sewer Crew will begin working on that tomorrow. So there is quite a bit happening, uh, in the city right now as we speak.
Mr. Erickson, I was out on, um, East Viking closer to the Polaris plant. And I noticed that it looks like there might be some striping going on over there. There's lots of. Different colors on the road. Is that from us or something else?
Mr. Almud might be able to comment on that, uh, better than myself. I know he is coordinating the striping, uh, work. And so Chuck, maybe you can comment on that, but I believe, uh, things were marked out there for striping, but I don't know that it had been completed yet.
Yes, that's, is correct. Um, w- we have, uh, marked the striping on East Viking and other streets that were striping, which is gonna happen this week yet. Uh, it's just for the, the striper, they're worn off. Too bad. You couldn't see where they were no more. And so that is what them lines are. Thank.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, Chief Hoppy? I have seen a lot of great posts lately regarding ice cream and ICs and, um. I, I don't know, lots of great community, things going on, although I am sad that I have not been invited to have any ice cream or ICs. I'm just saying. So maybe you can kind of fill us in a little bit on what, what, um, our PD is doing out there, um, in, in terms of our community.
Sounds good. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you get yourself a bicycle or a scooter, I'm sure you could have been out to skate park today. And one, one of those, those ICs that we were handing out to our, our local kids as they, uh, uh, were kind of jumping for Officer Boker there. But, uh, you know, certainly, you know, it's been some challenging, um, times this, this year with COVID and, and trying to, um. Uh, stay engaged with the community and, and, you know, some of our initiative, uh, community initiatives, uh, have been hampered along the way. But, um, you know, as we see, you know, kids out and we see, um, you know, healthcare providers, uh, really, you know, kind of stepping up and, and taking the lead on this COVID stuff. We thought it was just really a good idea to show our appreciation, um, to them. My, our community has been very supportive of us in the past. And, you know, as we kind of move through the COVID and come to a new reality of what's normal, we think it's important that we, we get out there and continue to engage any place and any way we can. And that's kind of what you've been seeing, um, on our social media stuff is, is really highlighting, you know, our partnerships with. You know, with our health providers, with our businesses, you know, giving us some of the resources to be able to hand out to, um, you know, individuals and kids along the way. So, um, i- i- it's not abnormal or unusual for what we do. Um, I think we just find in new and unique ways to really engage our community along the way. And, uh, it's been good. It's been, it's been really good. The guys are out there doing their, and gals are out there really participating and engaging the communities. And we just want our community to see that we're still here for them and, um, enjoy and policing them.
Yeah, it's been very positive. So, um, thank you, um, to our officers and to you and, uh, everybody who came up with that idea and just embracing that. So I love seeing Officer Boker on his bike, um, at the skateboard park. I give him kudos for that. So you won't see me out there. We're just saying that. All right.
Two wheels for you.
There we go. All right, um, if there is nothing else, um, we will go ahead. We need a motion to adjourn. Anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, so we have, uh, member Zero says the first member Schilling has the second, and you know what? We're just gonna, on the count of three. All right, is that okay? Can I do that, Tom?
That's fine. It doesn't require a vote.
Well, yeah, but it's fun. So.
You can do it. Go for it. Yeah.
On the count of three. One, two, three. I.
Hi.
Awesome. All right, you guys. Have a great rest of your week.
Great.
Good day.
Thank you everyone.